Okay.
What do you get?
We're ready when you are. Ms. Harvey?
Are you ready? Excuse me. Good afternoon. This is Vice Chair Robin Harvey, presiding on behalf of Chair Jane Lichter. I call to order the meeting of the Board of Education of Baltimore County for Tuesday, August twelfth, twenty twenty five. This evening's Board of Education meeting is being broadcast through the B C P S online live meeting broadcast and on B C P S T V, Comcast Xfinity Channel seventy three, Verizon Files Channel thirty four. In order to efficiently conduct this meeting, all voting items this evening will be done by roll call vote. May I have a motion to go into closed session as permitted by the Open Meetings Act as found in Annotated Code of Maryland, General Provisions Article, Sections three dash three oh five B one and B seven to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals, and consult with counsel to obtain legal advice.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Hen. Is there a second? May I have a second, please?
Second, Young.
Thank you, Mr. Young. May I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Ms. Frompong? Ms. Frompong, can you hear us?
I can, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Ogunbay?
Yes.
Mr. Luskey?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Pumphrey? Ms. Lichter? Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domandowski? Ms. Booker-Dwyer? Thank you. Favors eight.
Thank you.
This is Vice Chair Robyn Harvey, presiding on behalf of Chair Jane Lickter. I now call to order the meeting of the Board of Education of Baltimore County for Tuesday, August 12, 2025. I invite you to recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag with us. We will then have a moment of silence in recognition of those who have served education in Baltimore County.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's Board of Education meeting is being broadcast through BCPS Online Live Meeting Broadcast and on BCPS TV, Comcast Xfinity Channel 73, Verizon Files Channel 34. And in order to efficiently conduct this meeting, all voting items this evening will be done by roll call vote. The first item on the agenda tonight is consideration of the August 12th Agenda. Dr. Rogers, are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda?
I'm unaware of any changes to this evening's agenda.
Thank you. Hearing none, the agenda stands as presented. Is there any discussion? Wait, I don't have it. Oh, I apologize, I skipped a section. It's not, thank you. Earlier this evening, the board met in closed s- no, I mean, excuse me, apologies. Apologies, everyone. Earlier in this evening, the board met in closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act for the following reasons: to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals; and consult with councils to obtain legal advice. The closed session summary and the open session information summary can be found on Board Docs under the Board meeting agenda date. The next item on the agenda is Personnel Matters, and for that I call on Mr. McCall.
Good evening, Vice Chair Harvey, Superintendent Dr. Rogers, and members of the Board. Like the Board's consent for the following Personnel Matters, we have retirements, resignations, leave, and deceased recognition of service.
Do I have a motion to approve the Personnel Matters as presented in Exhibits D1 through D4?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Hen, is there a second?
Second, Young.
Thank you, Mr. Young, is there any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Ms. Frempong?
Yes.
Ms. Ogumbe?
Yes.
Ms. Taluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Dominowski?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Administrative Appointments, and for that I call on Dr. Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair Harvey and members of the Board, I'm bringing forward the following administrative appointments for your approval: Assistant Principal, Catonsville Elementary School, Cedarmere Elementary School, Dogwood Elementary School, Lansdowne High School; Manager, Office of Budget and Reporting, and ERP Infrastructure Engineer, Office of Enterprise Solutions.
Do I have a motion to approve the Personnel Matters as presented in Exhibit E1?
So moved, Dominowski.
Thank you, Ms. Dominowski, is there a second?
Second, Hen.
Thank you, Ms. Hen, is there any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Ms. Frempong?
Yes.
Ms. Ogumbe?
Yes.
Ms. Taluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Dominowski?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries, Dr. Rogers.
Thank you. Our first appointment this evening is Christopher Bunne, please stand and be recognized. Christopher is attending this evening and is being appointed as the Assistant Principal at Lansdowne High School. I also saw him with the Principal of Lansdowne High School, Allison Seymour. With 24 years of service with Baltimore County Public Schools, prior experiences include music teacher at Lansdowne High School, technology education teacher and music teacher at Patapsco High School and Center for the Arts, and consulting teacher in the Office of Educator Development. Congratulations. Our next appointment is Alicia Cagnalotti. Alicia is attending this evening with her husband, Chris, and was appointed at the July 22nd Board of Education meeting as the Principal at Lyons Mill Elementary School. With five years of service with Baltimore County Public Schools, her prior experiences include elementary teacher at Lyons Mill Elementary School and Assistant Principal at Cedarmere Elementary School. Prior to that, Alicia served as secondary teacher in Los Angeles Unified School District, language arts and social studies teacher in Moreno Valley Unified School District, and special education teacher in Howard County Public Schools. Congratulations. Our next appointment is Christine Carringer. Christine is attending this evening with her husband, Mike, and was appointed at the July 22nd Board of Education meeting as the Assistant Principal at Deep Creek Elementary School. With 23 years of service with Baltimore County Public Schools, Christine's BCPS services include elementary teacher at Dundalk Elementary and Lyons Mill Elementary Schools, kindergarten teacher at Huron Wood Elementary and Newtown Elementary Schools, and resource teacher at Woodmore Elementary School. Congratulations. Our next appointment is Kristen Miles. Kristen is attending this evening with her husband, Ryan, and her two wonderful sons. She is being appointed as the Manager in the Office of Budget and Reporting. With 17 years of service with Baltimore County Public Schools, Kristen's experiences include data specialist and data analyst, excuse me, in the Office of Budget and Reporting, and fiscal supervisor in the Department of Transportation. Congratulations. Our next appointment is Anthony Schultz. Anthony is attending this evening with his wife, Anna Fitzgibbon, and I think I saw some cute kids with them, three, as she signals. Anthony was appointed at the July 22nd Board of Education meeting as the Principal at Halsted Academy. With 17 years of experience with Baltimore County Public Schools, his prior service includes elementary teacher at Hebbville Elementary, stat teacher at Powhatan, resource teacher in the Office of Academics, and Assistant Principal at Westtown Elementary School. Congratulations. Our next appointment is Morgan Sledge. Morgan is attending this evening with her parents, Glenn and Lakeisha James, and is being appointed as the Assistant Principal at Dogwood Elementary School. With six years of service with Baltimore County Public Schools, Morgan's BCPS experience includes elementary teacher at Randalls Town Elementary School and staff development teacher at Dogwood Elementary School. Congratulations. Our next appointment is Malik Soyes. Malik is attending this evening with his wife, Ebony, and is being appointed as the Assistant Principal at Cedarmere Elementary School. With four years of service with Baltimore County Public Schools, Malik's prior experiences include community school facilitator and senior community school facilitator in the Office of Community Schools. Prior to that, Malik served as Dean of Culture at Civic Leadership Academy in Kip, Baltimore, Dean of Students at Ascend Middle School, and Director Student Support at the Baltimore Collegiate School for Boys. Congratulations. Our next appointment is Joseph Ting. Joseph is attending this evening with his wife, Anastasia, and is being appointed as the Assistant Principal at Catonsville Elementary School. With 15 years of service with Baltimore County Public Schools, Joseph's BCPS experiences include resource teacher and elementary teacher at Dundalk Elementary School, elementary teacher at Padonia Elementary School, and resource teacher supervisor and specialist in the Office of Mathematics. Congratulations. Our next appointment is Tracy Transparanti. Tracy is attending this evening with her children, Jackson and Abigail, and was appointed at the July 22nd Board of Education meeting as the Specialist Comprehensive Coordinated Intervening Services Student Support Team in Section 504, that's a lot, in the Department of Student Support Services. With 25 years of service with Baltimore County Public Schools, prior experiences include special education teacher at Victory Villa Elementary and Martin Boulevard, pre-kindergarten teacher at Victory Villa, and resource teacher at Victory Villa Elementary School in the Department of Student Support Services. Prior to that, Tracy served as a special education teacher in Baltimore City Public Schools. Congratulations. Final appointment for the evening is watching virtually, Jamar Davis. Jamar is being appointed as the ERP Infrastructure Engineer in the Office of Enterprise Solutions. With two years of service with Baltimore County Public Schools, his prior experiences include ERP Database Administrator in the Office of Enterprise Solutions. Prior to that, he served as a Senior SQL Database Administrator at Sienna Corporation and Database Engineer at Dell Technologies. Congratulations and welcome back to BCPS.
Thank you, Superintendent Rogers, and congratulations to all of tonight's appointees. Our next item on the agenda is Public Comment. This is one of the opportunities the Board provides to hear the views and receive the advice of community members. If not selected to address the Board, members of the public may submit their comments to the Board members via email at boe@bcps.org. The Baltimore County Police Department's Homeland Security Unit and Office of School Safety has recommended safety and security protocols which are posted in the Board Room and available in Board Docs and on the Board's participation by the public website. While we encourage public input on policy, programs, and practices within the purview of this Board and this school system, this is not the proper forum to address specific student or employee matters or to comment on matters that do not relate to public education in Baltimore County. Inappropriate personal remarks or other behavior such as language that promotes violence against a BCPS employee or that disrupts or interferes with the conduct of this meeting are out of order and will not be tolerated. Persons who otherwise disrupt or disturb this meeting will not be allowed to continue their remarks and will be escorted from the meeting. Please observe the three-minute clock, which will let you know when your time is up. The microphone will be turned off at the end of your time or prior to that time at the discretion of the Board Chair. Do we have any elected officials? I will, we do not have any school system affiliated speakers for tonight, so we'll move on to Unions and Ms. Kelly Oles from TABCO.
Good evening, Acting Chair Harvey, Dr. Rogers, and members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Tonight is my first opportunity to address the Board as the President of TABCO. I can't believe how quickly August has gone so far. Educators report back next week, and our new educators seemed really excited and ready at NEO yesterday. Watching our new teachers reminded me of when I started in BCPS some time ago. As a new teacher, there were many things I didn't know, but what I did know was that I wanted to be able to advocate for my students and help them to learn to advocate for themselves. Being able to stand up for and speak out about what you need is important and necessary to improve and for growth. Somehow, though not surprising if you know me, I ended up also speaking out for my colleagues and quickly learned the rights that we are afforded through our master agreement, striving for improved work conditions for educators, which are the learning conditions for our students. Advocacy is one of TABCO's values as well. I am grateful for the opportunity afforded to me in the position of President to continue to advocate for our educators and students. Transparency is another value that I share with TABCO. Clear, honest, and open communication is necessary to ensure that those you are serving know the work that is expected and being done. Transparency is also an important way to build trusting and collegial relationships within a group or organization. This typically includes a level of checks and balances throughout decision-making processes. I look forward to working with you as we advocate for our students and educators in a meaningful and transparent way.
Thank you. Our next group of speakers is our nonprofit community, and I will call on Mr. Derek McPherson. Mr. Derek McPherson? Okay. We will move on to our individual citizens or students group, and our first speaker in that group is Ms. Sharon Serhaugh.
Good evening. The last time I was up here, I noted some concerns about special education, summer school, and extended school year. BCPS continues with the "one size fits all." That doesn't work. The result this summer has been partially compliance concerns and schools scrambling to get IEPs and placements done before the school start, year starts. That's not happening. For many, several of my clients included, that's going to cause chaos. At the end of last school year, we lost several IEP facilitators. This is to add to the facilitators that we already lost in the middle of the school year. Remember those school psychologists? We lost a lot of them too, and as a result, we couldn't do meetings in the month of July because assessments weren't getting done. because assessments weren't getting done. I spent a lot of time on the phone trying to get assessments done. And I can tell you that I still don't know whether or not they were completed. Some of the providers, because schools are scrambling, went outside the special ed process to get things moving. As in, no ten-day notice. Hi, your meeting's tomorrow. Not on my watch. Wait a minute, I don't have my assessment information. You're supposed to have that to me five days ahead of time. Move the meeting. The result is schools are scrambling to get assessments reviewed, IEPs written, eligibility made, and placements made, all in one meeting next week. That doesn't work. Then on top of that, what did we do with students who needed summer school, who needed credit recovery? Well, it doesn't matter if you failed a class, you're in middle school. You just move to the next level. And I know that happens because I've had several clients dealing with that. I also know that I have several clients right now in abeyance, not knowing whether or not they got their credit recovered because they're now waiting to take the test until the beginning of the school year. What's wrong with this picture?
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Elias. John Elias. Our next speaker is Ashley Stivers.
Hi, I'm Ashley Stivers. Right next to me, I want to remind you guys, especially the superintendent, last time I was here, it's your job to run these schools. It's your job, if you hear something, to do something about it, hold your principals accountable. It's also your job not to threaten families. This child right here you guys work for, this child, this email right here, all of you should take a note and not smile, not laugh at it? You discriminated against my son. And ma'am, I hold you responsible because you did nothing about it. Now my son wants to finish his year out, fifth grade.
Ma'am, public comment is not for individual cases. If you have a concern regarding the school system as a whole, we're happy to hear it, but this is not the forum to discuss an individual case.
You guys work for this child. Our kids, you get plenty of money for, okay? We've been discriminated against by Baltimore County. What are you going to do with that policy? Please don't cut me off, I'm finishing up. From Mr. Charles to Mr. Paradise, nothing has been done to hold them accountable?
Ms. Stivers.
No, I'm here to speak. I'm here to speak. Then do something about it. Do something.
Ms. Stivers, please. Ms. Stivers, your public comment time is done. If you have concerns that you'd like to individually discuss, this is not the forum. Please leave the podium. Thank you so much. The next speaker is Bosch Farone. The next speaker is Bosch Farone. I'll go back to Mr. John Elias. Oh, Mr. Farone. Dr. Farone, I apologize for that. Usually, usually I see you immediately.
Prissy, when you're ready, Dr. Farone.
Good evening to all, happy summer. I hope you rested. And I really hope that you think about what I'm going to say to you. As you know, I don't ask you for money or favor, and I'm not looking to be a board member. But if a historian wants to talk about you, write about you, what a historian would write about you? You are really good people, you are decent people. But what have you accomplished? So, in your instance, Chairwoman Harvey, you will be remembered really for basically the political decision of censoring Ms. Damonowski. To me, that's the only thing I could recall. Others, basically, making contracts, reviewing policies, adopting principles, assistant principles, you know, maintenance of effort. So, I have been in this business now, watching the board, studying it for at least twenty-five years, and really hasn't changed. The problems, the same. The poor performance of students, the same. And most recently, we, the taxpayer, including people who are working, like myself, paid you three billion dollars for operating budget. This is not really even adding the other budget about buildings and so forth. And that's really an expensive bill. Looking at the results, the results are poor. And it's not just today, or this year, or last year. It has been consistent for the past two decades. So, what does history say about the Board of Education? What did you accomplish? Maintenance of effort. That's really all what it is. You're not, you know, if you are going to make airplanes, it will never fly. If you're going to make electric cars, it will never be on the road. It's maintenance of effort. You're not even listening to angry taxpayers. Not. I'm really sorry. I'm really frustrated, disappointed. We pay Nordstrom prices, we give Dollar General results.
The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, and for that I call on Dr. Rogers.
Thank you, Vice Chair Harvey, members of the board. I'm pleased to provide the August report. All right, next slide, please. The first update I wanted to provide was on new educator orientation. I believe Ms. Oles referenced this and that we started yesterday with welcoming more than four hundred and seventy new educators to Team BCPS. The theme for this year is "Stronger Together: Building a Culture of Support and Engagement." We had a wonderful keynote from our Teacher of the Year and really gives us, this week gives us the opportunity to bring in new educators and to start providing them that necessary support that they need. You'll note on the slide where we have our day-one sessions listed. All of our teachers received the Skillful Teacher Book so that we are speaking the same language around pedagogy, meaning specifically how we teach students, how we ensure that they are, they meet objectives with success. And we are just excited about the group of teachers, nurses, counselors, who have joined Team BCPS. Slide, please. We also wanted to provide a staffing update. On this slide, you'll see data for the last three years around this date. Last year, we had the board meeting on the thirteenth. Today, we are meeting on the twelfth. Last year, we had over a hundred and twenty vacancies at this time. We have fifty-five point seven FTEs. Over the summer, Human Resources has done an excellent job in hosting seven summer hiring events. Last year, they had about five hundred attendees. To date, they've had well over sixteen hundred attendees. And you'll note when we look at our schools, seventy-four percent of schools have no vacancies. You have twenty-three percent of our schools with two or fewer vacancies and five schools that have more than two but less than four vacancies. So, we are definitely very grateful to the Department of Human, the Division of Human Resources, the Department of Staffing in particular, all of our principals and assistant principals, as well as the Division of Schools and Division of Curriculum Instruction, who have participated in helping us to close the gap on teacher vacancies. I did, thank you for that slide. This slide is a reminder to all of our families. If you have not tuned back into your email, please take a look at your email, please go to our website. We have started our Back to BCPS annual campaign that began on August first with a message with many updates for our families. The updated student handbook is available. There are ways for you to be connected. You see our logo for "Off and Away." Last year, if you recall, we spent a year in a pilot in some of our secondary schools around cell phones, responding to the feedback that we had received from our teachers, from our parents, around the distractions for cell phones. And this year is full implementation. Off and away is our expectation for every school, every day, that the devices are away. For students who do not yet have their vaccinations, we are proud again for the second year in a row to be hosting a mobile vaccination clinic. They will be out and about this weekend at our BCPS Fest. And we also have the mobile vaccination clinic in a variety of locations throughout the month. All of this information is available on our website. Next slide, please. And as a gentle reminder, the first day of school, where we welcome back more than a hundred and ten thousand students, is Monday, August twenty-fifth, 2025. So, if you have a three, four, or five-year-old, now is the time to enroll your child. If you have not had an opportunity to do that, simply go to our website, and all of the information that you need for enrollment and registration is available. I would like to thank Dr. Burquist, as well as Dr. Shea, who are leading our new educator orientation program and all of the divisions for your work and collaboration, including the Division of Schools, Division of Curriculum Instruction, our Operations Division, for all of your help to make sure that we have a successful beginning of year for all of our educators before we welcome our students in a very short period of time. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Student Board Members Report. Ms. Ogumbe?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Vice Chair Ms. Harvey, Superintendent Dr. Rogers, staff and community members, and of course, the students of Baltimore County. I'm so honored to be delivering my second-ever board report as a student member of the board. This past month has been both extremely busy and deeply educational. While I wish I could be there in person with you all this evening, I am grateful for the chance to still share my update. Over the past several weeks, I have had the opportunity to take part in a number of incredible experiences that have helped me grow as a leader and as a representative of our students. One highlight was attending the Maryland Association of Student Council's three-day presenter certification and executive board meeting in Montgomery County. Over the course of those three days, I not only had the honor of serving as an executive board member by virtue of my position as SMOB, but I also continued my service as one of MASC's State Legislative Affairs Coordinators. During the conference, I presented multiple workshops to students from across the entire state on effective workshop presentation skills, empowering them to share their voices confidently and meaningfully in their own schools and communities. These conversations reminded me that strong student leadership isn't just about holding a title, it's about equipping others to lead as well. I also had the privilege of attending the American Civil Liberties Union National Advocacy Institute for the second time. Returning to this program was just as fulfilling, if not more so, than my first experience. One of our key areas of discussion this year was education and school safety, topics that are central to my role here on the board. One of the most impactful moments from the program was participating in phone banking and meeting with various representatives and their staff. Throughout the program, we explored the challenges schools face in creating environments that are both physically safe and emotionally supportive. And I left with new perspectives and strategies that I'm eager to bring back into our BCPS conversations. Closer to home, I was able to attend the BCPS Partnership Fair, where I met with a variety of organizations from across Baltimore County. It was inspiring to hear about their missions and the ways that they are working to support our students, whether through mentorship, health services, extracurricular programs, or community engagement. These partnerships remind me how interconnected our school system is within the broader community and how much potential there is when we collaborate toward shared goals. In just a few days, I will be attending the annual BCPS Fest, a celebration of the back-to-school season in our BCPS family. This event is such a great way to start the year by bringing together students, families, staff, and community partners. In the same spirit of celebrating the new school year, I had the opportunity to launch the Back to BCPS School Campaign alongside Franklin High School Principal O'Connell, Mr. O'Connell, setting a tone of excitement, unity, and high expectations for the year ahead. Within the Baltimore County Student Council, through my role as SMOB, I also served on the officer team. For this past month, we reviewed over a hundred applications and appointed forty executive board members. I will specifically be overseeing the County Affairs Department, which focuses on mental health support and school safety, two priorities that remain at the forefront of our work this year. Through BCSD, I will also be in attendance at all monthly Board of Selected Students meetings led by our Vice President Sam Park, which provide invaluable insights from students across every part of our county. Looking ahead on August eighteenth, I will attend the Maryland Association of Boards of Education's Student Board Member Orientation. This will be an important opportunity to collaborate with other board members across the state, exchange ideas, and strengthen my ability to effectively represent Baltimore County students. This past month has been a whirlwind, but each experience has deepened my belief in the power of student voices and community collaboration. Progress has been made and we've taken steps forward in important conversations. I'm looking forward to continuing to listen, learn, and lead alongside all of you in the months ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ogumbe. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business, consideration of board policies. This is the second reader for these policies, and for that I call on Ms. Frempong, Vice Chair of the Policy Review Committee. Ms. Frempong?
Good evening. Members of the board, the Policy Review Committee asked that the board accept the committee's recommendation of the proposed changes to the following board policies. Board Policy 1270, Parent and Family Engagement. The second one is Board Policy 5210, Grading and Reporting. These policies are presented to you on tonight's agenda as Exhibits I-1 and I-2.
Thank you, Ms. Frempong. May I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the Board's Policy Review Committee for Board Policies 1270 and 5210?
So moved, Hen.
Thank you, Ms. Hen. No second is needed since the recommendation comes from the committee. Is there any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Hen? Ms. Frempong?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Ogumbe?
Yes.
Ms. Stileski? Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian? Thank you, Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Damonowski?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item on the agenda is action taken in closed session, and for that I call on Mr. Burns.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Rogers, I can report tonight, there are no matters requiring consideration in open session with respect to matters in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. The next item on the agenda is contract awards. I'm sorry, sir.
I'd like to say something before we get into contracts.
Regarding?
Contracts.
I mean, we have, well, can we hold that discussion for when we actually get into contracts?
Go ahead and start us off.
The next item on the agenda is contract awards, and for that I call on Mr. Young, Chair of the Building and Contracts Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Members of the board, the Board's Building and Contracts Committee met on Monday, August eleventh, 2025. Items K-2 through K-11 were forwarded to the full board for approval. Item K-1 was forwarded to the full board without a recommendation from the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Board members, we will separate item K-1 for the vote. Are there any additional separations requested? Do I have a motion to approve items K-3 through K-1?
So moved, Hen.
So move Hen.
Thank you, Ms. Hen. No second is needed since the recommendation comes from the committee. Is there any discussion? Mr. McMillian, did you want to make comment?
Not on those contracts.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Ms. Frempong?
Yes.
Ms. Ogumbe?
Yes.
Ms. Stoluski? Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Lictor?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonowski?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve item K-1?
So move Lictor.
Second Savoy.
Is there, eh, thank you, is there any discussion? Mr. McMillian?
I think this is the time for me to talk. Uh, I'm not a very eloquent speaker, and I'm not going to pretend that I can do that. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say this. Approximately a week ago, eight or nine days ago, I received a phone call, somebody shared some information about this contract. And I wasn't going to specifically say this contract, but because of the, the nature of the way this is played out, it's this contract. I listened to what the individual had to say. I went back, I'm the kind of person, if somebody calls me, I'm gonna try to help them. Or I'm gonna try to answer their questions, I'm gonna engage, I'm gonna listen to them. I'm gonna be an active listener, I'm gonna engage with them. So when the individual shared the information with me, I went back and I started asking questions. I tried to gather information so that I can come up with a, with an informed decision with it. Uh, so yesterday, I go into the Contract Committee, we talked about this contract, I asked numerous questions about it. Uh, the timeline was such that today, at, as I was on my way to this meeting, I received an email, and I've been accused of targeting a contract award winner to assist another organization. And that is nonsense. I wasn't favoring anybody over anybody, I was concerned about the process. And I think that as, as governance, we talk about governance and policymaking, I think that that, I, I interpret that as governance, that's part of my responsibilities. You know, I don't, I'm not, I'm not an employee of Baltimore County Public Schools, I'm an elected representative, I've tried to, I'm responsible to myself and to the people that voted for me. And I, that's my responsibility. I don't appreciate it being targeted. And, and then what, so what happened with this comment was, it went from this individual to this individual to this individual, from that individual, then it went over to the lawyers. And then it was recommended to me that I not talk about this and that I recuse myself. And, and that's not me, and I'm not gonna do that. And if I got something to say, I'll say it, and if I vote, I'll vote the way that I want to vote. And if somebody wants to do whatever they want to do to me, then go ahead and do it. I mean, at this point in my life, go ahead and do it. Thank you very much for letting me to say what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion or questions? Ms. Domonowski?
I just, I, I unfortunately wasn't able to watch, catch up on the Contract Committee meeting from last night, but I wanted to know, um, this contract, it looked like, um, there's a separate vendor for every sport. Is that the way that it was present, is that the way it was, you know, listed or solicited?
Pardon me, Ms. Domonowski, I'm gonna have Steph come forward so they can respond.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Domonowski. I'll take that question as it's a purchasing-related question. Yes, there are a, a few of these suppliers who provide officials for multiple sports, particularly the women's sports, but as a general rule, there is one referee umpire official organization for each sport.
But is that a, is that a, I guess I'm confused because if you're, if you, we need to fill the ref positions, why would we limit ourselves to one per vendor?
We have never had a problem filling the positions with a single provider per sport.
So if you don't, I guess, is it, do you turn someone away from, um, a vendor, a v, uh, would you turn a vendor away who would do multiple sports?
No, ma'am. We have at least one of the vendors who does provide multiple sports.
Okay, so it's not solicited as we can only accept one vendor per sport? So you would never deny someone because they were a vendor of another sport?
So, let me rephrase and see if that helps. The, uh, the one organization, the women's organization, they provide officials for, I believe it's three different women's sports. Um, some of the organizations only provide officials for a single sport. Um, we, the solicitation process and the evaluation process was low bid per sport. So if you had two suppliers who provided pricing for the same sport, we selected the lowest price for that sport. Does that help?
So these are, every bid that you accepted for a sport is because that bid was the lowest and not because they had multiple, they were covering multiple sports?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other, I see Mr. McMillian, are there any other questions or discussion? Mr. McMillian?
Ms. Webster, yesterday, when we were talking about the solicitations, I asked you if you could find that in writing. Did you?
I'm sorry, I did not get a chance to do that. I will take care of that.
Okay. And then secondly, you said that you would have to, when, I think it was Ms. Hen asked you if you could pull that away, if we could separate that particular contract under question away from the others. And I think your response was, I have to think about that.
That was my response, yes, sir. We cannot do that. Um, it calls into question, um, the appearance, why are we separating that one vendor from the entire, from all the rest? And that gives the appearance of impropriety.
Yeah, and, and, and it's, am I accurate when yesterday you used the example that we can't, you used o, other contracts as an example, where you send out a solicitation, you get numbers, maybe sort of like the, the vendors that do embroidery and that kind of thing? There would be a lot of different people that do that, right? And so a lot of them are awarded those contracts, correct?
Yes.
But they're not all the same price in contract, right? They would vary, wouldn't they?
That is correct.
Okay, but in this case, the, the contracts under question are, are two specific organizations that have... Somebody's...
Giving you your 30-second?
Okay, so he's still doing that, huh? Okay. Ms. Webster, thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Domonowski?
Just, just a quick follow-up. So when you say that you didn't turn away the vendor because it, what, you were able to like, single out that per sport, it was that vendor, it was a total contract including both sports, that was more than the single vendor with one sport? So you don't know necessarily if by itself it was less? Is that making sense?
I'm sorry, no, it's not.
Well, I'm confused, what I'm saying is like, if you have one vendor doing multiple sports, and you have another vendor coming in that wants to do one of those sports, how do you know that the vendor that's doing two sports is less than the vendor that just wants the one sport to take away? Is that making sense?
I think I can answer that question. So for, for each sport, the lowest, the lowest vendor, the lowest supplier is chosen. So let's say, uh, there's a, there's a supplier who bids on three sports because they, they can provide service for three different sports, and two of the three, they're the lowest supplier, they have the lowest cost, they would be awarded for those two sports, but not the third.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Ms. Hen?
Thank you. So my question is procedural as well. Um, following up on Mr. McMillian's question, then, what is the difference between an embroidery contract, for instance, and a sports officiant, um, contract where we award the contract to multiple embroidery companies, each with different rates versus officiants, where we may choose one over the other based on, um, something other than price, for instance, um, quality of service, you know, where our schools make that determination for, and in this case, perhaps availability of a ref. Um, and, and I know, Ms. Webster, you said we haven't had that difficulty in the past, but perhaps we do run into that. Um, it would seem that having that flexibility or having options would be a good thing. And can, can someone comment on that? And who made the determination that we were only going to limit it to it? And I'm also interested, because it was my question, as Mr. McMillian stated, as to where in the solicitation was it specified that we were limiting this to one, um, vendor per sport? So that's multiple questions. If you need me to repeat any of that, I will. I can speak in general. The method of award is outlined in the solicitation, and the method of award is developed in partnership with the office who is going to be using the contract. In this case, it would have been with, uh, Mr. Si. And that method of award will indicate whether you have multiple award vendors or single award vendors. And it, in the history of this contract, has this method of award been consistently a single vendor per?
Been consistently one vendor per sport.
And have we consistently received?
We have consistently received, yes.
Ms. Mc...
30 seconds.
Ms. McMillian?
Ms. Webster, refresh my memory on the question yesterday about a rubric that you guys use to evaluate the contracts. That is correct. You have, use a rubric, correct?
We have criteria that we use to evaluate every solicitation, yes.
And, and refresh my memory, too, is, is experience as an organization one of those things?
References that they provide as an organization are part of that. We also require a level of experience, um, that they have been in business providing this service for a certain number of years, yes.
Okay. Now, when you say this service, you're talking about providing high school soccer officials, assigning high school soccer officials to cover games? That's the service?
So I think that's a very specific question to a specific sport within the solicitation. So the solicitation itself would say that the supplier would need to have been in business and have qualified MPSSA certified referees, for example.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Hen?
Thank you. My follow-up is to Ms. Webster. Um, when I had asked about separating these contracts out, because they are eight individual contracts, I offered another, um, potential solution of separating all eight and not singling any particular vendor out to avoid the appearance of impropriety. Is that an option that you, um, had time to consider between our committee meeting yesterday and tonight? We considered several options, and we came to the conclusion that separating them out was not a viable option. Can you comment on why? It deviates from our current practice, which leaves us open to audit findings, and, um, it, there, there are times in a solicitation where an incumbent doesn't win the contract. So this is one of those times. In the past, the Board has requested updated contract recommendation exhibits for any number of reasons, because the terms are not clear, because the structuring of the contract recommendation does not meet the Board's desired action on that contract recommendation, and staff have graciously returned at a subsequent board meeting with a contract recommendation that is formatted in such a way that it meets the Board's desired outcome, because we can only vote up or down on a contract recommendation. So if there are members that would, had their preference, we would rather vote up to approve a recommendation that met those specifications, rather than vote down on a format that did not meet those specifications, and for the mutual benefit of everyone. So my, my recommendation or proposed solution was to separate them out so that board members could act according to their preferences, which is why I made that, that recommendation. So I, I hear what you're saying. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Hen. Mr. Young? Mr. Young?
I'm sorry, didn't get off mute. Um, thank you, Ms. Harvey. Any previous modifications that Ms. Hen has spoken about were, was only for clarifying information, it was not separating out various vendors within a contract. Additionally, I think we are, um, diving deeply down into the weeds on this, and this is getting it to be an uncomfortable conversation when you have a board member who basically is talking about a contract and a particular vendor, and that they've been advised to recuse themselves from voting on because of a possible connection. Um, so we should, you know, move this along and vote on this contract. Thank you, Ms. Harvey.
You're welcome, Mr. Young. May I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Hen?
Recused.
Ms. Frempong?
Yes.
Ms. Ogumbe?
Yes.
Ms. Stoluski?
Upstained.
Dr. Savoy?
Upstained.
Mr. McMillian?
No.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonowski?
No.
Sorry, Ms. Lictor?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes. Motion does not carry.
Favors five, sorry.
The next item on the agenda?
Pardon me, Ms. Harvey?
Yes. I'm, yes, sir.
I, I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh, so I, I want a clarification that since this contract has been voted down, that means the current one will run till, I believe Ms. Webster said, September 1st, and after that, what is the impact?
Point of order, Madam Chair. This is not on the agenda, and we're on to the next agenda item.
Understood. Uh, I, I would ask that the, uh, Dr. Rogers, that you provide that information to the Board regarding the impact of, uh, not approving this contract after, uh, it, the current one expires in September, please.
Yes, um, I believe this contract ends on September 30th, and this is, this will impact fall sports officially.
Well, please provide that information to the Board. We'll move to the next, uh, agenda item. The next item on the agenda is a report and consideration of the Magnet Programs Update, and for that I call on Dr. Elmendorf.
Good evening, Virtual Chair Lictor, Vice Chair Harvey, Superintendent Rogers, and members of the Board. Um, tonight's presentation is to provide an annual report on magnet programs as described in BCPS Board Policy 6400. Go to the next slide, please. Uh, we provided the definition here for you like we do every year. This is the definition that is within Policy 6400. Uh, we do have over 18,800 magnet students, representing nearly 17% of our BCPS student population that are enrolled in one of, 116 magnet programs at one of 32 locations. Next slide, please. Tonight, we will discuss with you two types of updates to BCPS magnet programs. Continued pauses, as you can see there in the yellow, as well as program sunsets, as you can see in the blue. A continued pause allows a magnet program to continue to pause the process for one additional year of taking new applicants. A sunset occurs when a magnet program no longer accepts a, applications with the intent to completely end the magnet program over an extended period of time. Next slide, please. Before we get into specific updates, it's important to understand that neither of the two types of updates as described in the previous slide will impact the participation in magnet programming for students currently enrolled in magnet programs or those who will be admitted in the fall of '25, in just a couple of weeks. All proposed updates would apply to the upcoming application cycle, which opens in the fall, but it's for school year '26, '27. And if... And of course, appropriate staffing and funding will continue to support the programming as appropriate. Next slide, please. So we are proposing that we continue the pause on taking applications for the International Baccalaureate Magnet Programs at our two elementary IB schools, as well as our three middle school IB schools. One of the reasons, as we discussed last year, was that four... Is that four of the five schools are identified by MSDE as schools in improvement status, so CSI or ATSI. Also, the continued pause will allow the schools to maintain their tighter focus on BCPS core curriculum and programmatic adjustments that need to be made in order to improve academic performance. The continued pause, I'll remind you from last year, is allowable under IB. And during this pause, the IB evaluation timeline also pauses. All schools would maintain their IB status, and the community would certainly be notified of the pause. Next slide, please. Milford Mill Academy Acting and Literacy Arts Programs are proposed to be sunset. As a reminder, these programs were approved last spring to be paused, and no applications were accepted for Fall '24 for school year '25-'26. We are also proposing discontinuing the Strings and Band and replacing these programs with instrumental music, which is a magnet program that exists in other schools. As you may recall, last year, the Board of Ed approved a pause to Milford Mill's Strings Program as well. Beginning in the Fall '25 magnet application for '26-'27, Milford Mill will begin taking applicants to the instrumental music magnet program for both Strings and Band. And then the Milford Academy Sunset would complete in June '28. The remaining magnet programs at Milford Mill Academy, which aren't mentioned here, would remain and can continue to take applications. And as a data point, the past magnet application from Fall '23 cycle, Milford Mill Academy received seven applications for 20 seats in instrumental music strings and five applications for 20 seats in acting. And as you can imagine, those numbers are not strong enough to maintain or sustain the program. Next slide, please. The Japanese World Language Magnet Program is proposed to sunset. Japanese as a world language is not offered at any BCPS high school. Therefore, the magnet program does not afford students of vertical pathway. The sunset would begin by not taking Grade 6 applications in Fall '25 for school year '26-'27. The sunset would be completed by June 2029. Additionally, tonight, we propose the phase-out of the Literary Arts Magnet Program at Patapsco High School and Center for the Arts due to low interest and a lack of direct connection to the addition that is scheduled to take place for renovation. As a data point, as I shared in the previous model, there were 24 applicants for Literary Arts. Of those 21 applied to... Of those, 21 applied to Grade 9, two to Grade 10, and one to Grade 11. Those numbers, again, are hard to sustain going forward. At this point, I want to turn it over to Leanne to talk about magnet and CTE programs.
Good evening. This evening, I am going to tear a second update that is related to our CTE programs and our magnet programs. The challenge we face, and quite frankly, have faced for many years in BCPS, is that some of our CTE programs are available as both magnet programs and then also available as CTE programs of study in our comprehensive schools. As Dr. Elmandorf shared with you, magnet programs are accessed through an application process, whereas the comprehensive school offerings are not accessed through an application process. In fact, I've had this conversation with several board members with confusion over why are they available as both options? So tonight, we propose Phase 1 of a strategic plan to kind of decouple our CTE and magnet programs so that programs of study, our CTE programs of study, are either available as a magnet option or as a CTE program of study at our comprehensive schools. And what our goal is to provide consistency and cohesion across all of our schools with these programs. Next slide, please. So the first proposal is around our Engineering Project Lead the Way program. As you can see here, this program is available at nine BCPS schools. Two of these schools are magnet schools currently, Parkville High School and Woodlawn High School. And at the other seven schools, Engineering Project Lead the Way is available as a comprehensive CTE program. The proposal is to phase out the magnet program, Engineering Project Lead the Way, at Parkville and Woodlawn, meaning those schools would no longer take applicants this fall. The programs could, in fact, remain in place at these schools because they have students coming in from across the boundary. So the programs would remain at these schools. Students simply would not access them. If approved this evening, that would allow Engineering Project Lead the Way to be consistently offered across all nine high schools as a CTE program of study. And also, if approved, we would begin with this application season, Fall of 2025, taking applications for 2026, or in fact, not taking applications for school year '26 for Grade 9. And the phase-out would be completed by June of 2030. So the students at those two schools currently in the magnet program would finish those out. Next slide, please. So also in Phase 1, we are looking at the Mechanical Construction Plumbing Careers Program. This CTE program is currently available at two of our high schools, Western School of Technology and Kenwood High School. It is a magnet program at Western School of Technology. It is a CTE program of study at Kenwood. The proposal for this program is a little bit different. We are proposing that this program be eliminated at Western School of Technology, remain in place at Kenwood. But at Western, we would substitute the Mechanical Construction Plumbing Careers Program with our Building Construction, or BCT, program. This is a program that looks at four aspects of construction. And I'm going to check my notes because I am not a expert on construction. It does include plumbing, but it also includes HVAC, carpentry, and electrical. So students would get kind of that broad-range approach with the shift. It would align with BCT that is available as a magnet program in Eastern Tech, Carver, Milford Mill, and Sellers Point Technical. So again, we would have consistency there with how the programs are offered. Again, Kenwood would continue to offer. The Mechanical Construction Plumbing Program is a CTE program of study. And again, it separates our programs with clean lines. They're available as magnet programs or not as magnet programs. Next slide, please. And then the final change we are proposing this evening is around Graphic Print Communications. Again, this program is currently available at two of our high schools, Western School of Technology, again, as a magnet program, Kenwood High School as a CTE program of study. We are actually proposing that both schools become or maintain magnet status. So Western would have no change. They continue to take applicants. And the change at Kenwood would mean that students would apply to the Graphic Prints Communication Program. It would become a magnet program at Kenwood High School. What this change means is currently, if students live in the Kenwood Boundary and they come to Kenwood and choose to participate, those students would now simply apply in that process. If approved, we would begin taking applications in Fall of 2025 for school year '26-'27. And again, our goal is alignment. This would mean that the Graphic Print Communications was only available as a magnet offering. Next slide, please. So we will continue to explore and analyze magnet programming across our system, including expansion of existing programs and new innovative magnet programs as a part of our annual process and informational updates that we provide to this board. As these recommendations are developed, we will continue to present to this Board of Ed. Thank you. And are there any questions?
One minute, Mr. McMillian. We need a motion to approve the magnet program updates as presented in Exhibit L. Is there a motion?
So move, Young.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. McMillian. Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. McMillian, we're in discussion. Please proceed.
What's the difference between the carpentry-plumbing program, whatever, at Eastern versus what's at Kenwood?
So Eastern Tech has Building Construction Technology, which includes those four programs. Let's see if I remember them off the top of my head. There's plumbing, HVAC, construction... And I do have to look at my notes. Electrical, thank you. And so it is that BCT model where the students participate in kind of all four as opposed to just a plumbing focus.
When you said technology, is there an answer on that?
I do not believe so, Mr. Sol.
Technology relates around the actual career fields that are being explored, right? So it would be technology that's related to carpentry or electricity or the other two fields.
Do you have any slots available at Eastern Tech and program? I'm just curious. It's not a great idea.
I'm sorry. I should give you the...
Thanks. I'm sorry.
Not off the top of my head. Typically, it's a class size, so about 25 students. But it could be give or take a little bit.
Are there other questions? Ms. Domonowski?
Just one really quick. How many, or if any, students will be immediately affected by the continued pause and sunset?
None.
If you... None?
None.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Frempong?
This is board member Frempong. Thank you. So from Slide 12... I'm sorry, Slide 9. We're just talking about Parkville High School and Woodlawn High School with Project Lead the Way. So as it is currently, between the magnet school offering and the CTE, how many seats are currently being offered?
At each school or across all nine schools, Ms. Frempong?
So for Parkville High School and Woodlawn High School are the ones... Based on that slide, it says it's magnet school and CTE. So for those two schools, how many seats are being offered currently?
So again, it's about a class size. 20 to 25 students in each program are what we're offering. Woodlawn doesn't always fill all of their seats. Parkville typically does.
So it's just 20 to 25? So between 40 to 50?
Across both schools, yes.
Okay. So then, once the magnet school offering is removed, how many seats are going to be offered?
So both of those schools would still be able to run and their Engineering Project Lead the Way. It would be for students enrolled at Parkville High School and students enrolled at Woodlawn High School. There would be no application process. So they could still run those classes at those schools. It doesn't mean the programs would go away.
So understood. I was just trying to understand the difference in size. So right with the... It's a district school, and so just students now who live in that Parkville area or Woodlawn area would attend. But is it still going to be able to, I guess, meet the needs of 40 to 50 students? Or is it going to decrease in size?
The number of students that can be serviced through the CTE program would be the same.
Okay. Okay, got it. Great, thank you. And then for Slide 6, where it talks about the sunsetting of the programs between Milford Mill Academy, where there's the acting, and then Patapsco with the Literary Arts Program. So we heard the numbers that it really wasn't a lot of applications for those seats. But I guess, system-wide, are we seeing other acting programs or other literary arts programs on the decline?
Acting is available also at Patapsco and Carver, and they fill their program each year. The Literary Arts Program has continued... Has originated at Carver, and it's continued to fill its program each year.
So then it sounds like it's something specific to this, I guess, these particular schools. And so, I guess, would Carver be the only option? Or what would be the other options for students who were still interested in pursuing the acting program or the literary arts programs in their area? Because I would guess going from Patapsco to a Carver is a big distance. So are there any kind of other local programs for those students in those areas?
So my understanding...
Fifteen seconds, Ms. Frempong.
I'm not in the Office of Fine Arts, but my understanding is there's theater or acting programs in almost all of our comprehensive high schools. So students have that opportunity at their home school. Carver transports for the entire county. So any student in the county who wants to participate in their literary arts, their acting program, has the opportunity to do that with transportation. And Patapsco High School transports for the entire East Side. So students who want to participate in their acting program are able to do so.
Great, thank you. And then last question from Slide 10. With the change for the Western School of Technology, does that impact any of the certifications that the students would be able to receive with the change in the programs?
I would have to check on the exact IRCs that are associated with Mechanical Construction Plumbing as opposed to Building Construction Technology. I don't have the IRC information off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hin?
Yes, thank you. Those students who might be interested in the magnet program at Parkville and High, the Engineering Project Lead the Way, do we know if their home schools would offer the same program as a CTE offering? Do we know where they're coming from now? And if they would have that same opportunity at their home schools after this expansion?
So Project Lead the Way is available currently as a magnet program at Parkville and Woodlawn. It's also available at Catonsville High School, Chesapeake High School, Delaney High School, Dunduck High School, Owings Mills, Perry Hall, and Pikesville. So there are quite a few schools that offer the Engineering Project Lead the Way. I believe that if students wish to participate in a CTE program that's not available at their home school, they can pursue a special permission transfer to access that program at another school.
Okay. Have we specifically looked, though, at those patterns to see where our magnet applicants are coming to Parkville from those that are interested? Based on our current patterns of magnet applicants? Since we said that Parkville is... Talking about Parkville, but also Woodlawn. But Parkville is filling their Engineering Project Lead the Way class. Are they pulling from mostly students' zone for Parkville? Are they pulling from Overly? Are they... Do we know what those trends are? And have we considered expanding the program to the schools that are drawing students? Or is it too small of a sample size to really make those correlations?
So I don't have exact numbers of applicants and from what feeder schools that they have come from. That's information I would need to get.
Okay.
I have a question. I think it's along the lines of Ms. Frempong's question. I attended a meeting at Western and talked to several students who were in the plumbing program and their ability to get their certifications and have internships, as well as our partners in the community plumbing companies having kind of that feeder training program and being able to kind of build their own team from those students was very important. And so I am also interested in the difference between what students will be able to achieve in terms of their certifications if the program switches from mechanical construction. I'm not quite sure what that is. If someone could explain it to me. And plumbing versus a broader kind of inclusion of these four different disciplines.
So I can certainly get back to this board with the industry-recognized credential information off the top of my head. I don't have the IRCs connected with each of those separate magnet programs. I'm sorry, CTE programs. See, I'm mixing them myself now.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? May I have a roll call vote, please? Ms. Hin?
Yes.
Ms. Frempong?
Abstained.
Ms. Ogunbe?
Yes.
Ms. Stolaski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonowski?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Lichter? Ms. Lichter? Favor is eight. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of the revised 2025-2026 school calendar. And for that, I call on Ms. Charlie Green and Ms. Bilski.
Good evening, Vice Chair Harvey, Dr. Rogers, members of the board. I'm here tonight with Ms. Bilski to present for the board's consideration proposed changes to the 2025-2026 school year calendar. I will turn it over to Ms. Bilski to go through the proposed changes.
Thank you. Good evening. As part of the agreement with TABCO reached during mediation, subject to board revision of the school system calendar, our request includes to change the Wednesday before Thanksgiving to a half-day remote PD and half-day...
Addition of November 14, 2025, and February 20, 2026, as three-hour early release days for students to provide teachers the opportunity to engage in professional development. The current calendar does not have any professional development days between November and March. And then November 26, the day before Thanksgiving, the proposal is for that to be a half-day for students and a half-day mental health or early release for teachers.
Do I have a motion to approve the revised 2025-2026 school calendar as presented in Exhibit M? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So move Lector?
Wait one moment. There's a--
Oh. Wait a minute. I can't, excuse me, everyone. Apologies. Let me repeat that. Revised. Do I have a motion to approve the revised 2025-2026 school calendar as presented in Exhibit M? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So move Lector?
Wait one moment. There's a--
Oh. Wait a minute. I can't, excuse me, everyone. What's this state? Apologies. Let me repeat that. Revised. Do I have a motion to approve the revised 2020-- I thought I said that. The revised, I thought I said that. Thank you. The revised 2025-2026 school calendar as presented in Exhibit M, as amended. Do I have a motion? So move Lector? Thank you, Ms. Lector. Is there a second?
Second, Savoy.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Mr. McMillian?
Ms. Billski, on November 26-- So when you realize that you couldn't do that because of 180 days, that would extend the school. So then you went back and you came up with this. Now, is that something that BCPS came up with, or was the mediator involved in that too?
The mediator was not involved. We collaborated with TABCO to work it out.
And then you came up with it.
You're welcome.
Ms. Domonowski?
My question is, does this affect 12-year employees, I mean, 12-month employees the same as it affects 10-month employees? And what I mean by that is with taking that day off before the Wednesday, instead of doing the half-day on Wednesday before Thanksgiving and just having the day off and then adding June 17, does that give 12-month employees an extra day off that they didn't already have?
No. No.
It doesn't?
No.
Because they would be already working on June 17?
Correct.
But they wouldn't be, but they wouldn't have been working on--
Correct.
So they would have been working already June 17, but 10-month employees wouldn't have been. So it does give them an extra day.
The 10-month employees, per the mediation, would have been working that day before Thanksgiving. It would have been a half-day PD, half-day early release. 12 months would have done the same thing on that day.
To clarify, are we talking about the day before Thanksgiving? Because I thought, did you say June 17 was the--
Right. But you added June 17 as--
No.
We didn't add it.
We did not add a day.
They did not want to add it.
Because they were--
So we put students back, students will be in school for a half-day on the day before Thanksgiving versus a whole day off. And we did not extend the school calendar to the 17th.
You did not extend this calendar?
Not at all. That's correct. So by making the 26 a half-day for students, it eliminated the need--
So why does it say the school year was extended by one day on June 17?
It would have had to have been if we closed for students the day before Thanksgiving because students will be in the building half-day. We don't need to extend. We'll have, we'll have the 180 days.
So, but I don't know. I'm still kind of confused.
Ms. Domonowski, if I could, if I could try. So you have an exhibit, Ms. Billski referenced, working together with TABCO. That's why the statement was made, "as amended." TABCO polled their membership to find out if they wanted to extend the school year or if they wanted to come in. Overwhelming majority, President Olds stated, they did not want to extend the school year to June 17.
That explains it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers.
Ms. Hen?
I think that answers my question. It clarifies it because the description we have, and for the public at home, our public content description seems outdated. The description of the changes that were made were prior to the conversation that I'm hearing with Ms. Olds in terms of--
That is correct.
Correct. That is correct.
Okay. So if I may make the request, Madam Vice Chair, for that to be updated so that our public understands what we're voting on. And were, did any discussions take place that would have resulted in a full-day solution versus half-days? Because we know that ideally for instruction, the full day is an optimal solution for our students and for teaching and learning versus two half-days. And that would have been my preference in seeing this. It sounds like that's what our preference was as well in proposing extending it by a day at the end of the year. This does not seem ideal for our student learning, but was that conversation something we had or offered?
So yes, thank you. Our preference would have been a full day, but it's the 180-day requirement that brought us to this solution. So that, if we did it on one of the other days, we would still have to extend the school day, the school year, in order to meet the 180-day requirement for students.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none, may I have a roll call vote, please? Ms. Hen?
No.
Ms. Frimpong?
Ms. Frimpong?
Thank you. Ms. Agumbe?
Yes.
Ms. Stoleski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the report on the proposed FY 2027 State Capitol Budget Request. And for that, I call on Dr. Grimm.
Good evening, Vice Chair Harvey, Superintendent Dr. Rogers, and members of the board. I'm here this evening with Ms. Leslie Lazary, Director of Facilities, Construction and Improvement, and Mr. Dean Simak, Manager, Facilities, Construction and Improvement. We are here this evening to present to you the FY 2027 State Capitol Budget Request for your information. Next slide, please. This slide provides the schedule for the FY 2027 Capitol Budget Request. After tonight's introduction, there will be a boardwork session on August 26, followed by your vote on September 9. Next slide, please. This slide shows the priority order of the FY 2027 State Capitol Budget Request, and it's been provided as a separate item as well on its own. Next slide, please. Please note, the FY 2027 State Capitol Budget Request looks different than submissions in the past. Per Note Number 1, this request is formatted to the new state requirement that all projects are listed in strict priority order. In the past, we had some flexibility with our list that we could move projects to some degree with the IAC. Depending on funding need, beginning last year, they, actually mid-process last year, they wanted to see a strict priority order. Next slide, please. For FY 2026, BCPS received just over $40 million in state capital funding. Based on July estimates, BCPS may receive just under $37 million in state capital funding for FY 2027. However, the IAC is sometimes able to secure additional funding, and BCPS needs to be prepared for this possibility. Further, some projects may be funded through grants or other income. Thus, the state funding priority list includes projects totaling almost $49 million for FY 2027. And we know, for example, that we have some schools in the Healthy Schools Funding Program that has helped us with a number of roof replacements that we may be able to pull off this list because they'll be funded in some other ways. Next slide, please. As a result of anticipated state funding for FY 2027, the strict priority order includes capital needed for the Delaney High School Replacement Project and the Scotts Branch Elementary School Replacement Project, but also systemic needs, including chiller, intercom, boiler, and roof replacements that represent immediate capital needs. If state capital funding exceeds what is estimated, funding for planning and design for future products, projects will continue. Thank you.
Thank you for your report, Dr. Grimm and team. Board members, please submit any questions you may have on the proposed FY 2027 State Capitol Budget Request to Dr. Rogers by Tuesday, August 19, 2025, for discussion at the August 26, 2025 boardwork session. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is information, I'm sorry?
Pardon me, Madam Vice Chair. In addition to the questions, could I ask for a list of built-to, projects funded using Built to Learn or other funding sources in addition to the state capital request so that we may see what projects are currently in the pipeline or being prioritized, but perhaps funded using other sources?
For this, for the comparable fiscal--
In order to formulate our questions, is that information that the board could receive?
I would, I would request that you put it in a question to the superintendent, to request that information.
Okay. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is-- The first item is the Quarter 4 Audit Report. The next two items include the Revised Superintendent Rules 0200, Basic Board Commitments, and Rule 5440, Services to Students. The next item on the agenda is Board Member Comments and Agenda Setting. I'll just go around. Ms. Domonowski, do you have any comments or agenda?
Yes. I was going to ask this during information, but I wanted to request that we add the Quarter 4 Audit Report to the next Audit Committee meeting.
Say that again, Ms. Domonowski, please.
I wanted to ask if we were, already had it on the Audit Committee schedule for the next meeting, the Quarter 4 Audit Report, or if it's not, to please add it to the next September Audit Committee meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Hen?
Nothing from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Agumbe?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stoleski?
I have none tonight. Thank you.
Dr. Savoy?
Nothing at this time. Thank you so much.
Mr. McMillian?
I think I've said enough.
Mr. Young?
Yes, Ms. Harvey. Thank you. Coming out of the Building and Contracts Meeting yesterday, I believe Ms. Webster said it would take, you know, approximately four weeks for the officiating contract to be signed, and that would leave approximately two weeks of a transition period. That's why I asked, what is the impact of our vote tonight on this? Because if we have a contract expiring at the end of September without a replacement in place, then, you know, I think, but, you know, I'll wait for Dr. Rogers' report, that there's going to be an impact in our ability to officiate fall sports. In addition, I remind my colleagues that our role is governance and that we shouldn't be having conversations with vendors who lose bids to the point that we even go researching and trying to find out what happened. That puts us, as a board, in a very tricky situation. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. I will close out by--
Ms. Frimpong has left the meeting.
I will close out by saying that on National Night Out, I had the opportunity to meet and speak with several of our SROs, and I cannot express the level of positivity they have for our students and our schools. They absolutely love working with the schools. They have connections with the staff, the teachers, and the students. And they are wonderful ambassadors for BCPS in the community and with our families and students. And so I just wanted to acknowledge the role that they play. And with that, and with that, the last item on the agenda is announcements. The board's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 26, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. Thank you all for joining us tonight. The meeting is now adjourned.